Our next meeting is going to be after July 4th, which is wild, the June meeting of the local planning committee. Thank you everyone for being here. Caleb, we're good, we're on go to meeting and all that jazz?
Yes.
Thank you so much for your help, for helping us, we really appreciate it. I know Brian is going to be away, we have lost a member to the Board of Selectmen, and maybe Pete will be able to join us remotely. But I think we still have a quorum. So we'll call to business. I think the first thing we can do is we can review and approve the minutes from last month. Thank you Barbara for doing that so faithfully, we appreciate it.
Vouluv.
You got a second to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, because I don't think there's anybody on remotely, so we don't have to, that I see yet, so we don't have to do a name call. Cool. Got that, first order of business. And then Paul, thank you, I guess Sharon is joining us but is stuck on Route 6. So is coming, and she's going to take us through a lot of things, we could jump to C of the agenda.
Chairman?
Yes.
Would you like a nomination?
We would like a nomination.
I nominate Garrett to be our new Vice President, Vice Chair.
Heard a second, any discussion? Wouldn't anyone else like to be?
I did just check what the name came in.
I promised a massage.
I'm saying we're not.
I'll take it from Jeff.
Something sparkly.
Yeah.
I guess since no one else is online, we can also do it all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, that's done. Good, thank you, thank you, we really appreciate it, thank you.
No problem.
Yes, thank you. Kind of related to B, even though Sharon's not here yet, Paul and I had spoken a little bit about two things. Paul is going to help us with the Board of Selectmen get a new member, so we're not uneven. Thank you. So I'll keep you apprised on that process, however they'd like to do it, I mean there were other people that applied, we will be welcoming, we're glad they're coming.
But it's their, it's their choice.
Paul helped us with that, yes, that's the process, because it's a selectmen-appointed committee, so.
Paul, are they just revisiting the original applicants?
I haven't done anything yet, I don't know what they're going to do.
That was a while ago.
If they want to just go back to that list, or...
Technically, they have to advertise it for two weeks.
They do it no matter what.
Okay. We won't be crazy.
I think they ran through most of the applicants last time.
Yeah, they did.
But we want to, we want to be amenable to that, that whole process, so thank you. And then the 27th of June is the Housing Trust is having an open forum, and I think in all our deliberation, we all kind of understand that we're on the same page, that, you know, housing is a huge priority.
Yep.
So anyone and everyone who couldn't come on the 27th of June, I think we should have representation, I will do everything I can, I should be able to be there. What time is that?
Seven?
It's in the...
I think it's seven.
So it's in the evening? Okay.
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
Six thirty to eight thirty, and it's here, or?
No, it's at the community center.
Community Center, got it.
I tried to go. I heard, so I can make more if anybody needs.
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Housing Trust Forum, join us, learn more and share it, and I think it would just be, so Paul, I don't know if you, we are very, we want to be supportive of the Housing Trust's work, and if, whatever you'd like to kind of inform the committee, because they have a consultant as well, and I think probably we will all want to understand how we're going to...
It's the same group that a whole bunch of us went to after our meeting.
Yes, but there's a bit of evolution, and they are, Paul's going to tell us about it.
So, as I understand it, I think...
Good, say join us, yes.
So as I understand it, back in, I think, 2019, the Trust hired Jennifer Goulston, Housing Consultant, to develop an action plan for them. And then the pandemic happened, and I think it went cold for a couple of years. And so the Trust has signed a new contract with her, and she is working on developing a strategy and an action plan to get them to express what their vision is for the future, what they would like to accomplish, and she's then going to put together an action plan with some steps for them to follow. There's a few housing consultants in the state that are recognized as experts in housing, and she's one of them. One of the others is Karen Sonnenberg, who's going to be working on the comprehensive plan to update the housing production plan. So I think the town's in a good position where we have some good consultants that are going to be able to, to help guide us through the housing planning exercise. Jennifer's already put together some information that's going to be presented at the meeting on the 27th, some really interesting facts about where, where we stand with housing and what some trends are. The brochure, the information she's put together lays out in a map where all of the Affordable Housing Trust property are, with some basic statistics about all of the property. And so it, I think it's a good primer for everyone to be able to attend that meeting, get up to speed a little more on what's going on with housing, and I think she's going to do a good job of helping to lead the Trust forward in, in their mission to create some more affordable housing in town.
Awesome.
So when we had spoken a little bit about this, I, just to kind of articulate, so everyone, I think, is reasonable to understand that the Trust, you know, is, has money to spend, and the consultant is helping them sort of implement some of that in their own work as a group, separate, though complementary, from our work in terms of planning around, like, long-term planning, housing issues in Harwich. Certainly, we want to be engaged with them and not at odds, and I had asked, you thought that potentially the two consultants can collaborate, or?
We, you know...
Yeah.
You know, I'd like to think that this is, that the work of the consultants will dovetail together, there's going to be some overlap.
Of course.
But I think we need to try to give clear direction to the consultants about, you know, this is what you're going to focus on, and that's what you're going to focus it on, so we don't have too much overlap.
There's, there's market rate housing, and then a whole bunch of stuff below that, including, what's the official definition of affordable, is it 80%?
Yes.
What about above that? Is the Trust not addressing that, is that where things stand?
Well, that, that was apparently a controversial issue where...
Has that been resolved?
These terms, the term workforce housing, had been thrown around and some were trying to define it. Affordable housing in terms of the state for the subsidized housing inventory is subsidized housing that is for people of 80% or below the median income for the area, for us, I think it's Barnstable County. Above that is, is the, the middle-income people, where a lot of us live.
Yeah, distinction between market rate.
And, you know, the middle-income folks don't get any breaks on grants and student loans for their kids that go to college, and they have to pay the full boat, and, and a lot of middle-income people really struggle where they're paying well beyond 30% of their income on housing. And the increases in interest rates recently and, and the housing market that was fairly erratic during the pandemic and after the pandemic, with stories of people paying hundreds of thousands of dollars over asking price because of the lack of demand in housing. These are all, you know, issues that are going on across the region and state, and most acute in eastern Massachusetts. Well, somewhat off-topic for, for us here, we've got a little bit of time to kill.
Yeah, that's good, we...
You know, two years ago, the state made a change to the State Zoning Act, to Chapter 40A, Section 3, that required any communities that were served by the MBTA and any communities abutting them to make zoning changes that allowed for a certain number of multifamily housing units. So change the zoning so that a target number of multifamily housing units could be developed. And that has turned out to be very controversial, where, you know, about 150 cities and towns in the 495 belt, I've been told that they need, need to rezone to create 2,000 additional multifamily units. And that's caused a great deal of controversy, and the planners in, in that region are all very busy meeting targeted deadlines from DHCD on when they need to submit, you know, their zoning, it needs to get not only approved by town meeting, but it has to be approved by, by the state, by DHCD, to the point where the state has said that they have to, after they've defined the districts within a half a mile of, of train or bus stations, they have to show a build-out analysis that shows that they can build X number of units on each one of those properties within that, that district that needs to be created. So it's caused a lot of controversy, but it's an indication of, of how bad the problem has gotten, and what the state has done to try to get communities to, to try to allow for zoning to create more housing around transit stations.
To follow up on David's point, and I sense maybe a little opening that you're asking about, if, maybe we're incorrect and you can correct us, if the Trust is focusing on affordable housing as narrowly defined as 80% of the, you know, median income for Barnstable County, and then we have that, and then we have market rate, if, I think what David is asking, are we understanding correctly, is the Trust, have they decided or not decided, or still open, focusing on some of the other, so workforce is not a, workforce housing can mean many things, but the kind of, I mean this respectfully, though colloquially, the teacher fireman housing, you know, that, that kind of middle, middle-income housing, I know these terms are, we mean them, you understand what I'm saying, I may not be using the definitions exactly correctly, is the Trust sort of putting that aside now? And I think what's David is asking, is that maybe an opportunity for us to do some work? Or are we misunderstanding?
Sorry to jump back in, but, however the Trust goes, we, this town has to address housing, both state definition and above that.
Correct. I think we've, in our work of a year meeting, we, I think we have come to the consensus that as a committee in terms of planning, we aspire to have, lay out a long-term plan for multiple sort of interventions that are creative beyond sort of, we want to build, I mean, no, we want to build 100 units, but, you know, some of the other, some of the other implements and zoning tools and, and, all, everything's on the table, so.
I don't know, I don't know the answer to that question, I don't know if they've made a, a decision or taken a vote about whether or not they want to promote housing for people above 80% median income in that, you know, 100, 80 gap.
Yeah, 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 it's an interesting, I mean, I think we should all file that away, and when we go, that may be an interesting opportunity with the, with our housing production plan, you know, to...
What about...
Think, yeah.
So, as I understand it, housing authorities are targeted to develop housing for low-income, i.e. below 60% of the median income, and housing trusts are limited by state law to dealing with a cap of 80%.
I didn't realize that.
CPC is limited on their expenditures to 80% also?
I think that's true as well.
Or is it, I, I heard a comment thrown out at a meeting, it was 100% of median income, but, you know.
I don't think so.
Okay.
So, so yes, is what you're saying, so they, by, by definition, may have to narrow their focus, and that may be an opportunity, then, talked about, you were talking about, you know, giving the consultant clear, what are you working on, ours may be different kind of work.
Are you, are you aware of any town that has, has done, moved forward with a home rule petition to change the rules on housing trusts to allow them to, shoot, step into the higher income?
I'm, I'm not, there, there may be, but I'm, I'm not aware of that.
Because, you know, 80% in Tuckett doesn't do you anything, or Martha's Vineyard.
It's becoming that way here, I mean, the interest rates, inflation, yeah, it's, yeah.
A lot of those people taking fairs are middle, are the, are the middle-level people, not these 80% people.
I, I mean, and I think it's what, when we've talked about, like, a diverse, resilient community, we need sort of it all.
There can be one set of strategies for the 80% and below, but we shouldn't ignore another set of strategies.
Correct, correct, that's exactly what I'm saying, that may be our work.
I think the housing production plan, that's where it needs to go, it needs to look at the big picture and have different strategies for different target incomes.
The housing production plan is not limited to 80%?
I don't think, I don't, I don't think it should be. I think that, that we have some leeway there.
That's good.
The State Department of Housing and Community Development does need to, to approve and certify a housing production plan when it's done, but I don't think that, that we're handcuffed to, to just deal with the big A affordable housing of 80% below.
And, I mean, that's a really great olive branch, when we go and, you know, say, hey, we support you, but also we're kind of working on some, potentially something a little different.
Well, one last question, is there a document that details out what the limitations or allowable activities of housing trusts, or is that just in the general law someplace?
So there's, there's like a charter, they have clear, when they were established, there's a, there's a, is it a bylaw? There's a, I'm, I'm searching for what, what this is called, a mission statement, but there is a legal document that defines what they do, and, and I, I don't think there's a lot of flexibility there. I have a copy of it, and I've read it, it may be on the town's website under, under the Affordable Housing Trust. And as you are aware, the Trust is continuing to, to change, where there's been some changes to the membership, and I think there was a new member appointed last night. And so the, the new members of the Trust need to spend a little bit of time and, and work together and come to a consensus, so that they can all start rowing in the same direction to try to get some things done.
Or at least rowing.
The thing that, I can't tell them, it, it seems like the Trust looks for buildable land and tries to figure out how to build affordable housing on that, but, but it seems to really work at a har, higher volume, we need to deal with the two hard questions, which is density and sewers, because you're not going to get, you know, a bunch of houses and each have a big septic system, and, and it's not going to work if you have to build on an acre. And I don't know if they're wor, worrying about that, maybe that's an issue we can take on.
That's the real limiting factor, is wastewater.
Yeah.
And, and density is, is density, and to the extent that, that people are willing to accept higher densities of that kind of housing to, in order to move the needle forward from 5.2% affordable, more towards our goal of 10%, we have to accept greater densities. And people are, have strong feelings about density.
And, and just to clarify, so, when the quote, the quote state goal, which there's a lot of opinions about, of 10% affordable, and we're at 5.2, that is 80% and under, of big A affordable housing that we're talking about? Yeah.
Has there ever been a survey done as to what the needs are here for affordable versus the other people that don't fall under that 80%?
Middle-income, should we call it middle-income, should that be our working diagno, our working diagnosis, yeah, our working definition?
Well, I'm just, you know, everybody's throwing out affordable housing, and, okay, so if we have to have this certain percentage of all these units, I mean, are there enough people in Harwich that we're going to be doing this for, or what about, like, when we went to the housing huddle, what about the teachers and the cops and the firemen? I mean, don't they count? I mean, do we have a survey, do we know how many are, can fit in the affordable versus above the affordable but barely hanging in there?
So, I wasn't here when the last housing production plan was done, most of the time when, when a plan's being updated, there's, there's a public opinion survey that, that's conducted, and so there, there may have been a survey done years ago. Sharon's going to talk about a survey for, for the comprehensive plan update, and I think that we're going to be doing surveys on open space and recreation and housing, and the land use and other issues covered by the comprehensive plan. So I think we need to, to get a fresh survey, because certainly the housing situation continues to change, and it's different now than it was before the pandemic. So that's something that I think we need to ask the housing consultant that's going to work with us on updating the housing production plan to, to help work with us to develop a survey that, that covers the broader range of, of residents.
And I, I think it's a really valuable question, I have like, kind of, two points of discussion about this is, one, like, I think we're approaching it in this committee here, not in a judgmental way, but in a really inclusive way, sometimes it degenerates, you know, when you're talking about density, you know, I mean, it can get kind of ugly, some of these discussions, but I think we're approaching it, but you're, take the spirit of your question that you're asking, is there a demographic and a need, are we matching that in, in a way that, that, for, for the actual citizens of the town, you know?
In equitable to the population.
Well, think about it, though, okay, so...
100%, if you build 200 units, but that's not what, yes, yes.
Okay, but if you build 200 units and they're all one-bedroom unit, but the need for one-bedroom unit is only, you know, 75, and the need for two and three-bedroom units, I mean...
Yeah, yeah, and I would even, I would even, this is a question for Susan, but, you know, and to go, I, for you, Paul, too, the validity of gathering that data from survey, is that, is that a thing? Because that, or is that more like census-based? Because, boy, it seems like you could miss a lot of need just asking, is there a need in a, in a survey-based thing, you know?
The 2020 census data is, is out, and that's going to be thoroughly analyzed by all the consultants as kind of a baseline. But, you know, we can ask people survey questions, and whether they answer them or answer them truthfully, that, you know, I would like to think most people do, and if they do answer survey questions, honestly. And if they aren't interested in responding, they just don't answer that question or don't do the survey. We've, many communities have adopted inclusionary zoning, and Harwich doesn't have that. It's, it's a requirement in the zoning bylaw that says that if you're going to do a 20-unit subdivision, you need to make X number of units affordable with a deed restriction to, to make sure they're real affordable housing, if you're going to, you know, and, if you're going to do a multifamily development, X number or a certain percentage beyond the threshold of eight or 10 units in the development, if you're going beyond that, then there's, there's a formula where you need to create a certain number of affordable units. I've had a conversation with the housing advocate about that, and I think that there's an interest in, in doing an inclusionary zoning bylaw amendment for next year for town meeting, and so that's something that we're going to start to look at this summer. I've, I've worked on some in the past, I've seen bylaws that weren't used at all, I've seen bylaws that were somewhat successful, but not any that were wildly successful. And, and so there's the, the full gambit there, but it's, 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 it's another tool, it's another thing that we can do that, that may help to make a little bit of a difference down the road. And, and because this is a problem that is not going to have one solution, it's one that we need to implement multiple solutions to try to, try to make some progress. So that is one of the things that we'll probably talk to the consultants about, and, you know, probably going to be a recommendation in the plans, and it's something we can actually get ahead of.
About the inclusionary zoning, is it, can, do you define, like, in something like the town meeting article, you know, what the affordable is, or is it a state definition of affordable?
We usually make a broad reference to affordable housing that, that includes a deed restriction that is approved by the State Department of Housing and Community Development. So it, it, it has to be approved by the state to say that it's affordable.
But, but not big A, like...
Big A.
Big A.
So this is, most of the time when I'm talking about affordable housing, I'm talking about the statutory, you know, our goal.
80%.
Yeah.
From a builder perspective, there, when you start to look at those deed restrictions, it makes the work that they're looking at less interesting for them.
Yeah.
Because especially if we're talking about an 80, like, an 80%.
Right.
That's where, that's where the public policy is enforcing the private enterprise, yeah.
I say this in a super inclusionary way, I'm not, I have not, we may not need that, I mean, we need it, but that may not be, that's not necessarily the only thing we need.
Well, it takes you, it takes you to the...
So how, right.
Like, we also don't want the ambiance of Harwich to change, you know, the whole, we want it to stay the way it is, but my guess is, if all the empty buildable property was owned by the town as opposed by a bunch of individuals, we wouldn't be building all these 4,000 square foot houses, and we wouldn't be creating the need for more small housing. So we're in this predicament that a lot of this is driven by the fact that there are a lot of people who have wealth sitting on the fact that we have to overbuild probably everything, and, you know, but I don't think anybody's willing to take power on, you know?
Pre-2010, there was a, a conclusionary zoning article that was brought to town meeting, did not pass, and it wasn't...
Might be different.
But, and it wasn't on the basis that it would change the nature of it, it was on some really peculiar arguments by one particular landowner in town.
But it was driven by people who would make money.
Well...
Leo or somebody else?
Huh?
Leo or somebody else?
Leo.
Yeah.
Leo, who always plays the poor farmer role, and was arguing that if this went into effect, he'd have to, it would cost him so much money to subdivide off a small parcel of land for his daughter to have a house on. Of course, he always steps around the, the fact that he's got, he owns now, it's about six and a half million dollars worth of real estate in the state of Massachusetts, and he's not really the poor farmer that everybody, that he tries to make out, but it was on a very personal level that it was fought and, and emotional, the emotions of the night.
You can expect that.
You can expect that.
Was there any builder, builder opposition on it that you heard?
Not particularly.
It's a nuanced, exactly to your point, I mean, it's a nuanced issue in...
It's a very different picture and a very different issue than it was in 2010.
Yeah.
If anyone still here needs and wants us, a lot of it would be to learn from that,
and be better prepared to argue it at a town meeting.
That's why I brought it up.
But I think we'd be having a totally different debate at a town meeting at this point than we were then.
Can I, can I ask a question? Paul, you know, there's this recent proposal by the Ecumenical Council to build another phase of pine oaks.
Yes.
And that's...
It's the same group, but it would be in a different location.
Right, right.
It's not the Ecumenical, it's the Midgate, Midgate Church, Church.
But it's pine, the same pine oaks people, the nonprofit people, yeah.
So that, I mean, their proposal is quite substantial. I mean, they're talking, I think...
250 units, yeah.
More than that even, on 29 acres of land, which, so it works out to be, you know, back of the envelope, like, 10 acres, I mean, 10 units per acre, which for Harwich is very high density. I'm curious as to what kind of feedback or reaction you're getting in the community to that proposal, because when they came before the Board of Selectmen, it seemed like it was very well-received, but there, there's always, you know, a second, a second wave of... But there, there's always, you know, a second, a second wave of particularly, you know, people who live in a neighborhood. Now, that neighborhood actually is, it's relatively isolated because it's next to the industrial zone. And, you know, it's kind of often a place with a fair amount of open space around it actually. But, but I'm curious, I mean, what-
So, they have not applied yet. They've, they've not with the selectman and, and there was a, an internal meeting with, with some of the department heads where they did a brief presentation. But beyond that, we don't have a lot of details and, you know, there haven't been any public hearings. So, I, I haven't received any feedback, but they haven't applied yet. And, and let's, let's wait and see just what they're, what they're proposing. From what we saw at the meeting, I was at the, the feedback was fairly positive and-
Should we clap?
Yay!
You survived Route 6.
And enters the roadwayer.
Yep, yep, it's here.
We've already solved it.
And so, we'll have to wait and see. It's my understanding that if, if that does go forward, when it's completed, it will bring the town just short of the 10% goal.
Is they're doing 100% affordable, right?
I think so.
Is it only older adults like the other one?
No.
This is not going to, this is going to be an excuse and it's going to be like Barbara said, it's going to be, at least from what I was reading, I listened to that presentation, but I read something in the Chronicle last week too. They're talking about one, two and three bedroom. They don't have a design or anything yet and they recognize the density and they have buffer zones around it for green spaces.
And it was in stages, right?
In, in phases, yeah, but they, they're talking, and I believe it's, it's not, because some of their projects have been seniors and disabled.
That's on Bang Street, yes.
And low income, relatively.
Yeah, but if I remember what I read in the Chronicle, it was not going to have any of those restrictions. It's for everybody.
Under, under the state law, if, if 25% of the units are affordable with a capital A, then 100% of them get to be counted.
Yeah.
And, and looking ahead, if, if that, and this, this would take, if the project is approved, it will take years to build it. And the units don't get counted until a building permit to build one of them has been issued. So, we're looking maybe five years or longer down the road. But if that development were to go through the way they are discussing it and the Affordable Housing Trust moves forward with the development of the Marsline property, the town should be able to comfortably meet the 10% and go a little bit beyond that. And so, looking, you know, five years down the road, we're starting to see a, a plan come together. And, and, and those two, apparently that, that organization has already built almost half of the town's affordable units. And, and from what I've heard, they, they enjoy a pretty good reputation. So, you know, it's good to hear that there's a, a reputable group that is coming forward. They did bring in architects from Icon Architecture, a well-known Boston architectural planning consulting firm. And so, they, they have some really good designers that, that are going to be working on this. So, I think it's a wait and see and, and let's wait to see what they look like and what they propose. And, and, you know, we'll, we'll see what happens going forward. But i- i- if it does go forward, that, that the town could make substantial progress in, in addressing that 10% goal.
Five years isn't that long. I mean, you build any project right now, you're looking at least two years out. I mean, with just private pay and everything else, I mean, that's totally doable.
That's a long time for people that are struggling and looking for, well, to stay.
And to circle back wastewater, I think it's going to be one of their biggest challenges.
Without that, we're kind of dead.
My, yay Sharon, we're glad you're here. But my last, just so we're all working, because this was super helpful. It all works out, the universe all works out. We were able to pick Paul's brain for a lot of things. The, the works, we're kind of all working with the same definition. Ballpark dollar amount for income, what is 80, what's 80% in Brunswick County? Ballpark, we're not quote you, but just what we're generally talking about.
I think it's about 75,000.
About 75,000 dollars.
That's a guess.
Yeah, yeah, ballpark, so 75,000 dollars for like a, a individual?
A family income, a max family income. So, so, so two incomes combined, you know, less than 80,000.
Got it.
So, so much for the teachers and the-
Well, right, this is the, this is, this is, and I, I, I'm just going to keep saying this because we've had trouble in the community before, that we will always have these conversations respectfully here in this committee. So that when we're, when we're saying that, it's, we mean it with big inclusive, big I inclusive. Because sometimes it degenerates, it's, you know, yeah, so-
Is it 80% of 80,000 now, you're saying?
No, about that, that's the income cap.
A total combined family income of about 80,000 to-
Yes, so David, David's point is that, that's one demographic. And then, then there's another demographic who is housing challenged that that does not address.
Yeah, I can, I can follow up with you with a, a more official answer to that question.
I think it's helpful as we're kind of talking about these ideas, yeah.
I was just Googled, medium household income in 2021, dollars, 2017 to 2021, 82,619 dollars.
But the household of four?
It's just saying average, it's just saying medium income for Brunswick County.
That's an individual.
So, so 80, 80% of 82,000 is 65, 6. Okay, I think it's just helpful and understandable.
With that, Madam Chairman, I will step back and-
Yes, thank you Paul, very much.
Turn it over to our consultant, Sharon.
Thank you.
You can be in the corner, but Paul likes to be in the corner.
Sharon, we're so glad you're here. So, we blew through some of our agenda, we approved our minutes, we took care of some housekeeping things, so we're all yours.
Okay, is there, the presentation?
It's right behind you.
Oh, okay.
If you want, do you want to come sit here?
It might be easier to kind of come behind you.
Yeah, yeah, come on over.
I want us to be behind you.
No, come sit, come join us here.
Stand over there, yeah.
Or wherever you're, wherever you're comfortable, we're all-
Thank you.
We're all friends, you're welcome to sit.
Well, I really apologize for being late, but the accident was on-
You're going to need to be near a microphone though.
I can't go anywhere as far as I go.
I'm, I'm fine, because I'm not going to be, and then you're central to where you need to be on this project. Thank you so much. You're welcome. So, good to be here. Back in, back in Harwich and been quite a while, so hopefully this will-
Now you're too far away from it.
I'm too far away.
No, no, it's easy. We'll figure it out.
Dear Caleb, I don't know if our clicker works.
You can just ask me to forward the slide.
Okay, sure, it's, that's easy enough. If you want, yeah, go ahead and ask. Well, I have a, a brief presentation for you tonight. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Sharon Rooney and Principal Planner with Ty and Bond. I've been with the company about three and a half years. Prior to that, I was with the Cape Cod Commission for almost 30 years, retired as Chief Planner. And I'm really pleased to be joining you and assisting you in your local comprehensive plan update. So, I've outlined some, some goals for the project. And the project's really, it's three projects in one, right? It's, so it's a, the LCP update, we're going to start using acronyms probably right through the year. The update to the Local Comprehensive Plan, but it's also an update to the Housing Production Plan. I understand you were talking a little bit about housing just before I arrived. And an update to the Open Space and Recreation Plan. And I think it's a really great opportunity to look at those plans at the same time. Because open space and housing, they're kind of like bookends. You know, everybody, every town on the Cape has a critical housing issue. And at the same time, this is a really precious environment we have here. So, protection of open space is also really important. But for the, the LCP update, we have several goals for, for the project overall. And these align with the Cape Cod Regional Policy Plan and the Local Comprehensive Plan Regulations. So, my job, part of my job is to help guide you through that, you know, that process to ensure your plan is consistent with the regional plan, which is at the bottom there, that it satisfies the requirements for certification of the plan at, at the end of the process. But before we get there, we're going to be working on preparing a vision statement that expresses the shared values of the community. We have a number of outreach activities and we're going to talk about that hopefully a little bit tonight. Complete an inventory and assessment of existing conditions and key issues. So, I'm going to want to work with you on identifying early on, what are the key issues for Harwich? You know, housing is one of them clearly, but there are other ones as well. And we'll want to tailor those existing conditions reports or summaries, however they're presented in graphic form or written form, on your key issues. And also to identify planning and land use goals. And I'll provide assistance in both the regional goals and then we'll be working together to identify appropriate planning and land use goals for Harwich. Another key element that's new for the plan updates now is to prepare a capital facilities plan that aligns with the goals and the actions of the comprehensive plan. So, that was a big change that the commission made in 2019 when it updated its regulations. So, the, that's in the act, the Cape Cod Commission Act. It's something that the commission itself acknowledged that they could do better on. So, the local plans now, there's a, a real emphasis on that capital planning element. And again, as we've sort of touched on already, to complete the plan for development of low and moderate income housing.
How, how do you interpret moderate?
This is, this is all on our brain, I think, because I'm sitting here thinking about it too, yeah.
Well, this, this is a definition out of the act, so I think, you know, that's open to discussion, right? Because moderate can be moderate in different, different communities can be, can be different values. But it's consistent with local needs. So, you know, it's again, targeting what Harwich's needs are for housing.
So, we should, should we call, that may be helpful, should we start calling, I'm sorry to interrupt just because, but this was right on the-
No, go right ahead.
Should we adopt that nomenclature as a committee?
For the in-between?
Yes, affordable, when we say affordable, we mean the 80%, because I think we want to be clear. And then, should we start calling it moderate? Moderate income housing, or is that, I don't know, is that okay, Paul?
If it's something the committee is comfortable with?
Is that the, is that, is that the accurate term?
It's, it's an issue that's been put on the table, it will have to evolve to-
Okay, but we don't want to keep calling it teacher fireman housing, you know, but moderate, yeah, like we want to, you know, have the appropriate term.
It helps us define what we're, we're talking about, but-
Yes, yes, but I don't want to, I don't want them to-
People that should be able to afford to live in this place on their professional salaries.
Correct, prof, yeah. But workforce housing's not quite right either, so we struggled with this, yes.
Yes, and I, other towns have as well in that term workforce housing. You know, it's like first it was in vogue, now it's not in vogue, so-
We just want to all be using the, a acceptable term.
So, this term is again, out of, out of the Cape Cod Commission Act. So, you know, I think you can define what you think moderate income housing is.
Teacher firefighter, okay. Thank you.
And then, a few other key items here is to prepare a targeted action plan and implementation schedule. So, this is a really key component of the comprehensive plan itself. You want actions that are measurable, achievable, you know, that can be accomplished within the five to 10 year timeframe for the plan. And then, I know it's key to Harwich, it's key to all the communities to develop a really effective public outreach and engagement plan. That's actually a requirement that, you know, requirement, it's a strong recommendation in the comprehensive plan regulations. And another sort of focus is to, you know, how do we engage the community and who is the community? So, it's always a challenge, it's, it's a real challenge for all of us here on the Cape with the seasonal population that we have. I have a number of ideas and, you know, we can share and come up with a good plan that'll work for, for your town. And that's it for that slide, there's kind of a lot on there. So, that's the overall goals for the project. I did bring some slides, I did send copies along of the proposal.
We passed them on, yeah.
So, we can skim through this and then come back and just answer, I'd be happy to answer any questions tonight that you have. So, kind of walking through just very briefly, this outlines exactly what our, our scope includes. It's existing conditions, analysis of needs and vision and goals is, you know, straight after that. And the housing production plan, that will be led by Karen Sonnerborg, our subconsultant. And she is available to attend your meeting next month as her kickoff. She would like to have a meeting with the Comprehensive Plan Committee as well as the, the, whatever steering committee, you know, that is decided for the housing plan itself. So, it's kind of like two, two meetings that, and she, she could attend next month. Again, I won't go into all the detail here, but the next slide, because there's a lot of tasks. There you go. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the Open Space and Recreation Plan Updates, so that is part of our scope. And we will be doing that update in-house with our in-house team. Again, we're going to be wanting to coordinate with your open space committee and, and Paul and others on that plan update. And then, as I mentioned about the overall project goal, the capital facilities plan, the action plan, and then helping prepare the draft and final comprehensive plan. And then, helping you go through the Cape Cod Commission Certification Review. So, that's like our umbrella of, of services. We can tailor, particularly the community engagement piece of this. We can, happy to tailor that to what the committee would like and it feels is most appropriate. We have proposed some things, but if you tell me that, that really isn't going to work here, we'll, you know, come up, there are a lot of other tools in the toolkit. So, the, we have proposed things, including public workshops, I think at two, two different points. An ARC GIS online story map, but again, these things are, are sort of up for discussion. If you could go to the next slide. A little bit about our team, this is only a few of the people. We have a pretty large team with a diverse background. Not everyone's listed here. Randy Nelson is our Project Director. She's actually out of our New York office, but I've worked a lot with her on the comprehensive plans and other land use planning projects. Obviously, I'll be the project manager, but I'm also a doer, you know, a doer as well as a manager. So, you'll be seeing a lot of me. And then, we have on our team also some landscape architects, including Vesna Maneva. She's out of our Boston office, but she works heavily on both like parks and open space planning, but also community planning and graphic design. So, we've got a couple of people from Halverson Team that are very visually oriented, graphically oriented to assist us. And Gordon Leedy, another landscape architect, who will be the project manager for the open space and rec plan update. GIS staff, and then, as I mentioned, Karen, who will be our subconsultant for the housing production plan component. That's a little bit about our team, if you think there might be one or two more slides and that's it. So, just briefly, these don't necessarily go in linear order, but I'm just kind of laying out here. The way we propose to build upon the, the process, we would propose to start by going through the sort of existing conditions and identifying some of the existing needs and, and issues. And kind of following right on, on top of that would be the vision, developing a vision statement and growth policy and LCP goals. Those three elements work really well together. Not to say that all these other things on the right side, the housing production and the open space, don't also factor into your overall vision and goals, they do. Those are specific plans with specific requirements for the state. So, we have to follow, you know, certain processes. So, on the right are kind of like the plans within the plan, so to speak. And then, they all come together magically at the end and into your draft and final LCP. Sounds like a lot, but we'll kind of take it one chunk at a time and, and we'll get there. And there may be one more. Oh, yes, one thing I did want to mention, if we talk about surveys tonight, I don't know if, if we're going to or not.
Definitely talk about surveys.
Okay.
Talk about anything you want.
Okay, this is one tool that, that we've used really successfully. And, and it will, you know, depend in part on, you know, whether you think it's something that residents and folks in Harwich would use, or you'd prefer more sort of traditional approach to a survey. It's called Survey 123, it's an online tool. It's hard to see in this slide here, but it's a way for people to, you can create a, a survey with asking questions. So, it's kind of intended to be brief. And people can also place pins and photos on a map, so it's kind of map oriented. So, it's nice if you're asking people for what are their favorite places in town, you know, what, what things do they treasure and value? So, it's, it's a good tool around visioning. It wouldn't be probably, might not be the right tool to do like a really long, long survey. But it is one tool that's available that we're happy to talk to you more about. But it is one tool that's available that we're happy to talk to you more about. And it's shareable, you can collect data from it, you can, you can do a lot with it. So it's, it's pretty cool and it's very easy to use.
Is it like smartphone based, or how?
It can be, yep, yep, you can have like a, a code, people can go on and they can, if they're at a, you know, one of the ponds or town center and they take a picture, drop a pin, yeah. Again, we can talk about, you know, if that's something that you want to pursue. So that's just one example of sort of one of the, the tools. I know you, you know, in talking last week, we talked about that you're all interested in having a more graphically visually oriented plan. So these are some tools that can help give you data and, and give you sort of visual sort of results of data, if you will.
Does this heat, like almost heat map the data on these?
It can, yeah, definitely. And again, that, you know, image is hard to see, but yes, you could, you could say twenty people identified this place as a problem area, or.
I think that's cool.
Yeah, the center of town, or, you know, sort of, you know, again, exercises around visioning and, and what are some of your activity centers?
I don't know, I don't know how easy the interface to, is to use, but of course it sounds cool.
It's, it's pretty easy. And I don't, I may, if you wanna go to the next slide, if there is one. Oh, yes, and the other, other item we, we might talk about tonight is developing an outreach plan. I think it would be, it would be helpful for all of us, you know, to, to strategize about what are the sort of best ways to reach the public and the community. These are just some simple steps about, you know, if you're creating a plan, you know, and then what are the events going to be like? How are they gonna be publicized? Who's the audience? Invitations, you know, this is an example from Provincetown that they used, this is a simple flyer. But again, we can assist with preparing maps and supplies and materials for those events. And, and then coordinate with the staff to execute, you know, to get them publicized and out there so people know about various events. And then summarize the results out of, out of the outreach. These are just some, some ideas from some previous visioning workshops that I've been involved in. Some kind of common questions, and if, if you don't have a copy of the PowerPoint, you know, Paul has it, can share it with you after, you can look at this at your leisure. But we've done things like mapping exercises, simple things to get people warmed up, like where do you live, where do you work? What things, you know, three things do you love about Harwich, what one thing would you change? These are like sticky notes that people, I think this was in Truro, and it was very successful. People, you know, they get up, they move around, Margot's very familiar with this. It's like getting people to actively engage in an event rather than just being talked to. So we like to do things that are hands-on, breaking into small groups, brainstorming about, you know, what, what would you like the ideal Harwich to be in twenty years? So it's just some ideas on kind of some topics that, in a visioning workshop setting. Next slide. And then, these again are some, some ideas that have been used in other places. On the left, these were postcards that Provincetown used in their visioning. They each one had one question, they had, had a statistic on the front, some data on the front, and on the reverse it asked a question. And people, I think, dropped these into little boxes and, you know, various places in town. Very simple little thing, very successful. Then there's, you know, other things, we call them pop-up events, where in the, in the good weather, you know, people are out at the beaches or out, you know, at other festivals and events. It's a good place to get input from people that's really kind of quick, doesn't take people a long time to commit to. And the bottom there was a little postcard that we used in Truro, and that was used seasonally for, for summer folks. So we have lots of ideas that can be geared to different times of year, different audiences, different languages, if that's a need. And, next slide, please. And then outreach to schools, this is also another popular one. A little hard to see here, but you can have model making activities, you know, activities that kids are, you know, age appropriate. So if it's younger children, it might be, you know, tell us your favorite place and draw a picture of your favorite park. Older children, you'd be really surprised, I think really, you know, it's amazing what kids and younger, you know, younger folks like the ideas that they really have about their community. And, and making them a part of the process, they go home and they tell their parents about it, and it kind of builds, you know, builds on itself. So we've done things where we've had workshops for adults, but we've also had, you know, the daycare for children and activities for younger children, and that's worked really well too. So just some tools, just some different ideas to think about, and I wanted to kind of bring those to you early on to give you food for thought.
Do we have copies of this?
You do, it's in your email, in fact.
Oh, was it in?
Oh, I may have not, maybe not the presentation.
No, I sent it to Paul.
We can distribute the presentation.
Yeah, and yes, you know, absolutely. And next slide. Yes, I brought a few slides, again, you know, you can look at these later, some of the resources. We, you know, you do have a prior vision statement, we can revisit that. We'll be creating GIS maps and take photographs. Committee members and other people will have photographs, we combine those into boards and posters to again have hands-on activities for, for people in the visioning workshops. And, and the survey, depending on the timing for the survey, and we should discuss when, you know, if you want to do that early on, I would recommend do it early on, but time of year, we all know, is always an issue. You know, is this the right, you know, right time of year to reach the most people? Or do you leave the survey open for a period of time to make sure, you know, we're just going into the summer now, so.
Who gets the survey, year-round people, or everybody, or?
You, as, as many people as possible. I would recommend you do include part-time residents, seasonal, you know, visitors.
Summer's better for that.
Right, as well as year-round. Different towns have approached it differently.
I was astonished looking at the, the Truro survey results that you've sent, that they had over six hundred responses in the tiny little town of Truro.
They've worked really hard at getting the word out. They have a Truro Talks newsletter, e-newsletter, that's really effective, and people do read it. And if Harwich has something similar to that, or.
In Truro, did people respond online or a different way?
Most were online, but there are some challenges, you know, not everyone has access to a computer. So there, some of the reasons the postcards were used, for example, was partly because, and, and there was also help provided at the, you know, library, some of the schools, to, for people who didn't have access to a computer or were language challenged or for various reasons, you know, couldn't fill the survey out online. They had help available, volunteers, committee members volunteered and announced when they'd be available. I don't think a lot of people used that, most people did, did do it online.
What time of year did they do it?
Sorry?
Do we know what time of year they did it?
Truro did their survey in the fall, October, but they left it open quite a long time. They left it open till early January, I think, because of the sort of seasonal nature of things. And they just wanted to make sure they really captured, you know, a lot of people. And, and they also had three surveys in one. So they had their LCP survey, housing questions, maybe not open space questions, but there were like specific issues that they also wanted to capitalize on and do one survey. It was a longer survey, but, but they were worried about survey fatigue. And that if they had, you know, one survey go out in the fall and another one in the spring, people were gonna get tired of answering surveys. So it's something to think about, yeah.
One thing we have done, we have the stakeholders. We have that kind of, I think, we, that process sort of thoroughly, so in the, in the G drive there. We're making fun of my G drive. My low-tech, my low-tech Google Drive, but, so we have, we have the stakeholders. About the, and I think all of us, like, it's all kind of, you know, coming to mind, like, okay, you know, we can envision some big, like, big visionary workshops, you might have, you know, the school, I think, resonates because you get the teachers, you can get the teachers at the same time. Certainly the community center, because we can get the, the exercisers and the elderly and that, you know, I mean, I can, you know, I can see all that happening there. And then you have the LCP survey, which is, you know, a big thing. Is there like, how do you break it down for like the pop-up situation? Like for the library, for the Cranberry Festival, for the beach? Like you're not deploying the full-on LCP survey at Bang Street Beach? Like, what are you asking then? Like, what, how, how does that break out?
Yeah, I, you know, I think because we're just coming into summer, it'd be a good time to ask about vision, you know, vision and sort of key concerns, but one or two questions, like.
Got it, so it's like a little, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Use the little postcard idea, or a QR code, you know, on a postcard that somebody can pick up and, you know, it's brightly colored, and they can drop it off at town hall or mail it, or, you know, there's a variety of ways to.
Like an online, I think, because we also maybe all need, as we're undergoing, and we, we understand the thoroughness of the process, but as we're out and about engaged in the community, we also need our little elevator pitch, and it would be nice to have a little product. Multimodal, maybe it's a card, maybe it looks something like this, maybe it's a, a link we can send to, to be like, hey, this is our quick grab.
Yep, yeah, that's where something like the postcard idea, and you could do it online also, but, but asking like, in Truro, I think it was, what, what word or phrase describes Truro today? And what word or phrase describes Truro the future? And it was very simple, you know, so it kind of, it established sort of what are people's values? You know, what do they think is really important now? And then what, what do they want the town to become in the future? So two questions, takes somebody a couple of minutes.
I'm, I'm teasing you, but like I have a vision, like this, like what's your elevator pitch at, like the seal, you know? Like, it's a pub around the corner.
One of the things that's nice is you've suggested a lot of different ways of going about this.
Yeah, yeah.
Some of them are very time sensitive. I mean, for, the survey could take a little longer, an overall online survey.
Yeah, yeah.
But if we're gonna do any summer events.
Yes.
I would think by the time you're here next month, we would have a pretty solid idea.
We would, we would love a little quick something to, right, I, I mean, can I, if we're, if we're talking timeline, if this is appropriate. I mean, it kind of strikes me, like September, I'm still tethered to the school thing, right? But like maybe September is the time to launch a, the deep LCP survey. The seasonal community is still definitely here, September is spectacular.
Yeah, 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 through October, through Columbus Day, right?
So, and then we could leave it open long. So that may be the very thorough survey, but it would be nice to use something jaunty.
Yes.
For, to put that in our pockets in the next month.
And, and perhaps, you know, one of your workshops is this summer, you know, a few, I think we, I think we had set in our proposal, one in the summer and one early in the fall. But again, I'm happy to work with you on the scheduling, but I do think it's important to get your plan, your plan to plan, you know, how you wanna go about the outreach. Let's brainstorm about that and have that, you know, have something that you can accomplish this summer.
Because then we could kind of revisit, like, because it's already, our next meeting's already after July fourth, right? So then we could kind of even in August or September revisit, okay, we know the demographic, we know the stakeholders, and kind of reverse engineering, are we getting, are we hearing from these stakeholders in this little summer pass? And then maybe deploy some of that focused.
I mean, there's, yeah, there's like a lot of natural events that our town puts on, like Harwich Port Nights that we could take advantage of.
Sure, sure.
Cranberry Festival, obviously.
And then we can see what we're missing, and then also get the formal, and then I, I think we have, we have talked about this, and people, please can jump in, I mean, we did want some formal, like, like I see the sticky event and that breakout going very well at the senior center. Like, for example, that would be like a crowd that you could get, I mean, we could have a big one too, but, you know, some focused events like that.
Is there, is there any, and this might be a Paul question, is there any rules around enticing participation with giveaways? It's just something we do and.
Yeah, 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 there's ethics, there's ethics around that.
Like, hey, you can win a free iPad or something, we get that thing donated or whatever. Okay, so that's not.
There's not an ethical consideration around that.
Or little, little trinkets too. You can have little things that businesses donate that are inexpensive as an enticement.
Yes, yes, yes.
Or, you know, gift certificates from some local businesses as a raffle kind of thing.
Snacks and coffee also work.
Okay.
And I, I think this might be the end of my presentation, if you wanna go to the next slide. Again, yep, that's it, so.
Oh, there's the seal, in fact. Do, do you, what is, so we can understand if, if the visioning process, what is our master timeline around that? Like, and I mean, I think your, your fancy online tool about, I'm gonna call it the heat map tool or whatever, I mean, that seems really cool. You know, all that kind of stuff. What, what is our, what is our visioning timeline?
I, I didn't have a timeline for the LCP slide, you know, I didn't have a slide for that, but the visioning part, I would say over the next few months, you know, and the vision statement might, it will probably go through a couple of iterations at least, but you wanna get the input that helps you identify themes, you know, for your vision statement and your growth policy. And then you'll be doing the, you know, with my help, Paul's, you'll be doing the crafting of the draft statement. And then that can get like posted on, you know, the town's website, you can still be getting input on it as a draft. So they can be, you know, discrete pieces, so the vision, vision statement is one sort of discrete piece, you know, component of the plan that, good to kind of establish it early on, because then it, it guides the rest of the development of the plan.
And do you, what's the best practice around, do you have like that big LCP survey completed? Or like, could, could, like, I'm just laying out the timeline, because, you know, so, so you do our, our bite-sized stuff this summer. You launch a thorough survey, say, September. Do you do like a draft vision statement in, Paul, please jump in, like September? And then you finalize it in like November first after that LCP data, is, I mean, what's the, how much do you need?
Yeah, the, well, and, yeah, please, Paul, jump in.
Paul has thoughts, yeah.
The, yeah, the vision statement can definitely, it will be, you know, modified as you go along. It's kind of, it's a very high level, doesn't have to be terribly long, but as long as it really captures, you know, what the community's thinking is. And then the survey will either sort of reinforce that or, or, or say you, you know, we didn't all get it right. But if you do the visioning workshops early enough, you'll get that high level input from folks, you know, and then the survey's gonna go into more detail, most likely, because if, if you do combine it and have open space and housing, if you do that, it's gonna, it can get into a little more depth about issues. Whereas sort of visioning is, again, high level, thirty thousand foot, sort of. So you can have your, get some sort of initial input and then refine it through this, you know, survey later.
So if we're able to get going on the special events, summer, fall, that's relatively simple questions, open-ended, so forth. The survey, some of them are very open-ended, and then you got a zillion responses and it's impossible to analyze. Or you get the more detailed ones, but you have to know what the detailed questions to ask are. So that's a little further down the line.
Yeah.
So I don't know how you'd get through that whole maze.
Well, it just, it takes, it takes time. I mean, I've found that the, preparing the survey questions, it does take time and sort of, you know, working through, what is the right way to ask these, what are we trying to?
Are we able to like use Truro's, I mean, not specifically Truro's, but are we able to, like, is there a stock set of questions that Taiyuan Bond uses that modifies?
There are some, but every community wants, you know, they have some questions that are unique to your community. So that's why I gave you a few different examples, and there are more.
Yeah.
You know, Truro did decide, like I said, to combine several different topics into one survey. So it, you know, it did go into more depth about housing and the Walsh property in particular. That's why there's no. That's why there's no kind of perfect survey or the correct way to do it.
Right, and it, and the whole thing doesn't hang on the survey, it's just one piece of it, right?
Right, well, it's great that you, you recognize that because, um, yeah, that's why outreach isn't just a survey, it's, you know. I worked in one community in upstate New York, actually, um, in the last couple of years that did kitchen table conversations. And this committee, these were volunteers and a very large committee and they went and literally sat around the kitchen tables with households. And, um, did an incredible job in getting a lot of information, yeah.
Qualitative data, yeah.
Yeah, um, there's lots of ways to do it, it depends in part on your energy for these different things, right?
What town was that? What town?
Reinbeck, village of, village of Reinbeck, yeah.
So, so is there a way to, um. Uh, Colley, um, so we're, we're, we're on all this, is there a way, a tool that you have? To, for us, because we're gonna be out there, I think, collecting this, it, record some of that stuff? Like.
Like a, you're saying like a questionnaire platform or something?
Yeah, yeah, so, so, okay, so we're gonna have, I'm gonna have my QR code and I'm gonna go to the beach and I run into somebody I went to high school with, hey, fill this out. Or, you know, and I tell them, whatever, sure, but, um, say, um, that person says.
Crazy.
Harwich sucks, or, you know, or, or, I, I don't mean it that way, but like actually provides some me, um, or, you know, Harwich should really do this or whatever. Is there a way for us to record some of that, that's another, it's a dovetail of what your kitchen conversation was?
Right, it can be done, um, it could be done through the little snapshot survey even, it's, you could, you could have a, you know, uh, open ended question, like maybe the answer.
Anything else you'd like to say?
Yeah, well, they actually did do that in a couple of towns, tell us anything else you'd like us to know, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Things you're concerned about, um, um, so you can do that and then they can provide that input. David, you're right, that it, it, it can become a little bit, you know, daunting to have a lot of open ended questions, um.
I've, no, I wonder if it, yeah, through the brief thing, it might be, yeah.
But if you have the special events, you're not gonna get the huge volume of stuff to go through those open ended questions. It's just the survey itself that it can get pretty complicated.
Yeah, well, yeah, so we've used, um, I don't know if you're really, you know, if you're asking about sort of, um, you know, what tool to your, you know, what platform to use. We've done, most of them have been online, because then you can control, um, you know, people doing it more than once. Also just recording the data, if you were to do hand surveys, someone has to.
Yeah, enter.
Record all of that, so, um, I do recommend some sort of online platform, we've used, um, Survey Monkey.
Yeah.
It has some, has some, all of these have issues, um.
One, one, one anecdotal one, oh, I was involved in the last open space survey in this town, we got a great response. All we had to do is contact Harwich Conservation Trust and they contacted all their members, we also had a very skewed result.
Right, right, right.
We actually liked the results, so that was okay.
Right, 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 we're, we're, yes, yes.
I think just to answer some of the, like, the aggregation of sediment analysis or let's say qualitative data. There's a ton of tools out there, um, that I'm familiar with and that we use to pull in our customer information. Specific to open ended questions. And then you can, you're hearing all this chat about AI, but that's the, the field I'm in. You can run a lot of different LLMs off of it, which is the ChatGPT version, to pull this stuff out.
So Sharon sent us a Truro example.
Yeah.
Use your software to go through what she sent us and tell us how it worked.
Sure, we can do that, as long as it, as long as it's in a CSV file or, or something, we can definitely do that.
That would be a very interesting example.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so I think we're, we're getting it, we're getting a timeline, you know, we, we get it. Should we spend some time, um, maybe, while we're all here, critical mass, uh, thinking what that brief summer, what do we want to call it? Tidbit? The summer tid, the summer tidbit is, but, but, like, what, like, I, your questions were, you know, what do you value most about Har-? Or, I, I, maybe give us some examples, because maybe we could put together a jaunty, three question thing, like the third one being, what do you want to tell us?
What else would you like us to know?
Yeah, that's gotta be number three, but number one and two, snappy, and then we're gonna want some sort of way to. Start to use, it's like, I'm gonna go talk to librarian Anne, librarian Anne, fill this out, you know?
We used to, at first year C camps years ago, I remember one of the councils, like, we'd go around the counseling at the end of the week and it was like a prune and a plum. So, you know, like a question of, what, what, what do you think is great about Harwich?
Yeah.
But then how you phrase it, what concerns, you know, like what do you, what do you think is awful about Harwich? You know, we need the witness.
Yeah, the Oreo cookie if you back, right, yeah, 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 yeah.
What are we doing right, what's great about it, something like that, um, what, you know, what, you know? Does the teacher mean, where could we improve?
Those exact ones are already in one of your other towns, just as you just.
Give us some options, because we might, we can, we can settle this.
Exactly, yeah, and I could, I can follow up with some options too, you know, give you some ideas that, that you can, you know, choose your favorite one, but, um. Yeah, what, um, you know, did like, what, what do you love most about Harwich?
Yeah.
What one thing would you want to change?
Okay.
You know, that's not too, it's not totally negative, it's like something you would improve upon or change. The wording is really up to you and, you know, um, I can give you examples and.
And, and this is an acceptable way to just have an op, to have, to Garrett's point, to have just a. Free text?
Like a little snapshot. It's been quite a weather day, hasn't it?
So, so this, this is, this is free, this is free text that comes in.
Oh, no.
Like, you're not gonna have one thing you want to change at Harwich and have five options.
No, it would be.
It's free text.
Right, yes, it would be, right, you, and again, it could be, um, something where, you know, there's a, there's a code that people do it online. Or it's a postcard that people can drop off at town hall.
I think we'd want all of those, yeah.
You might want all, all of the things, because.
Yes, 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 yes.
In, um.
We want a beach box.
Yeah, um, Cape Verde and, you know, if there are language, you know, language barriers? You're gonna have it in, you know, Portuguese or Spanish or something, you know, um, just, yeah, very straightforward, simple, um, one or two questions. And then have a link to your LCP, you know, like on the, the webpage. Have a plan, if you have an LCP webpage, provide a link to the plant for further information or for contact, always have that.
This, 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 this may be too deep, both of you, um. Does it, besides capturing the free text, does it, is it sticky at all about who's responding? Like demographic?
That was something Truro, you know, I hate to keep bringing up Truro, but it's.
Yeah, it's okay, we like Truro.
A lot of, a lot of good lessons during there, they put on their little postcard, it's hard to see on the screen. Are you a resident, visitor or seasonal resident? So they had a checkbox, because they did want to know, um, yeah, that was important for them.
Just, just as we double down on, when we know, when we go back, say, after we have some samples of this and look at, okay, are we hitting some of the demographics? Or some of the stakeholders, it would be nice to know who we're missing, but.
Well, I think if you're rolling this out in the summer, you especially want that, because that's what you've got here in the summer, you've got.
Yeah.
Some of us locals, although you won't find most of us on the beach.
We're all hiding, yes.
Because we're working or we just avoid the beaches.
Avoid the people.
We're hiding in our yards, yes.
People who are seasonal, who, you know, they may be here more than they used to be.
Yeah.
Cause COVID, they may.
Yeah, yeah.
But they're here for the summer, either all summer or coming and going, and you've got visitors and.
Okay, no, I think.
That is our.
Yeah, yeah, I think we're gonna want a QR code, because we're gonna want a way to zip it around, we're gonna want a card, Paul has thoughts.
Yeah.
A lot of surveys, um, at the front or the back have some demographic questions. They, they ask, you know, roughly age groups.
Well, of, of course, but that, you know, I know, I know, I mean, I, I do have some, so that to me strikes me to get, to get participation. And to get these pithy comments and to start us going, that strikes me as, that kind of demographic data less appropriate now?
Right.
And more for the big, the comprehensive LCP, that's why I was asking of how.
You're just saying.
How invasive is that program, I mean, because, you know, I fill out a lot of stuff online and it pulls a lot.
Oh, the survey one, two, three?
No, um, so, so any little thing, depending on the power of your program, this is Garrett's expertise, is gonna know exactly who I am, where I filled it out. Knows my income, knows my, I, but just if we're looking at that, are we getting demographics? Beyond, beyond self-reported demographics.
A tool like the survey one, two, three is controlled by the town or by the, the, the host. So, you know, in this case, it would be the town and that way you can't have, you know, people invading other people's privacy. But it is, it is controlled by the town, it's run off of ArcGIS online, does the town have that? So if you have a license to do that, the town does, um, it's very easy to set that up.
Of course, the data would be in aggregate, you don't want to say like Joyce McIntyre, you know, I mean, I don't mean it that way, but are we looking at? So you are able to offer something brief, that's free text, that's responded online, pull demographic data in aggregate?
Wouldn't necessarily pull demographic data unless you ask that question.
You're, you're asking for, you're asking for, for cookie tracking and like really understanding profiles, yeah.
I'm not saying that that's wise, I'm just asking.
I think that should come up in the more in-depth survey.
But that's self-reported.
My thought is, the summer you kind of.
You're blasting.
Touch on everybody, you do it fast, it's easy, it's user friendly, it's quick.
You understand.
Gives us a, a range of the people that are here.
Dirty as.
And those who are deeply interested in what we're up to are then more likely to come back and find that other survey and fill it out.
I, there are ways of, of pulling it without ever formally asking it, but I agree that I think that's necessary.
By the time we get to that more in-depth survey, we kind of want some demographics.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that, but you also, you know, for the quick pop up question.
Pop up questions are what?
You want people to feel free to answer it without fear that they're gonna be tracked down.
Yes, correct, 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 okay.
Not asking for addresses or any personal data.
We just want them to thirty seconds to give us the pithy comments.
I think Joyce is trying to account for, did we, are, did we pulse enough of the stakeholder community that we want to and who are we missing? But like, I think that's gonna happen later.
Fine.
With the deeper one and, and then we can talk about all sorts of tracking stuff.
Nefarious.
Yeah.
Back, back room.
If you have this initial round, you know, starting this.
Pop up, pop up.
Pop up.
Yeah, that's what we're gonna call it.
Are you trying to, are, is it leading more towards a postcard type of thing, or is it leading more towards showing up at, um, Harwich Port Stroll? Or sporting events or arts events, which way do you see it?
I think that's where you hand them the postcards.
Okay.
Both.
It's not necessarily like, um, the committee, you know, spending all day, I mean, you could go to the transfer station and.
Ooh.
Hand out cards there, that's a very popular place.
It's gonna be amazing, let's go, yeah.
On a Saturday, um, Hoppustle has a space day, something like that.
The treasure chest, yes, go ahead, go ahead.
And, um, you know, a committee member could perhaps be there, hand the postcards out, or it could be very passive, they could just be available. And then whoever picks them up, picks them up.
Got it.
It's kind of nice to see a face, um, and say, hi, I'm, uh, on the comprehensive planning committee and, you know, donate an hour of your time on a Saturday. And you get fifty to a hundred postcards out and, and then you, again, provide that link back to the plan, what it is you're, you know, you're working on longer term. So some people will check back in and follow the process and you start to build a, a base of support. Like people were actually asked what they, what they thought.
So it seems to me that for next meeting, we would want to have this postcard, what it's gonna say and an action plan as to what place, what advance.
So we're gonna have, we're gonna have, we have a postcard, but we're also gonna have like a digital one, like, so I can like, hey.
Yeah.
Right, you could have both.
Yes, we, we, we will, we definitely want both. And then the card could be dropped off, but the card could also be collected at the time, right? The box at the dump is a great example, um, so, cool, our questions. What do you love most about Harwich, one thing you want to change, and is there anything else you want to tell us?
Yes.
Does anyone have others?
Are there any things that worry you about it in a sense, though? Because I think what you're thinking in the future.
Yeah, but I think if you keep the language more neutral, instead of leading them into that, if, you know, I think they're gonna tell you what's on their mind.
What do you love most about Harwich, one thing you want to change?
So there, if you see something you, you know.
Rather than saying one thing you want to change, why don't say, what are you concerned about? You know, because, because it's not necessarily that you have to change something, it's, you know.
What are your concerns about?
Yeah.
What are your concerns about Harwich?
Yeah.
You can guy, you can guide us, Sharon.
Well, yeah, this is where, yeah, there is, um, there's many different ways to.
I, I, I love, what do you love most about Harwich, and that's a strong lead.
Yeah, true, I really, I really like that resonated with, um, with that, with the Truro committee as well.
Does that, does that give you enough to, give us some specific questions?
I can, I can, um, share with you, you know, by email, um.
Yeah, I'm just trying to tidy this up, so that we could, no, no, I mean, I think we can, we can.
I can give you some, you know, a short list of ideas and a couple of ways to get the word out and then if you're, you know, comfortable at your next meeting.
So how do we do that open meeting law?
I was gonna say, I, I think we'd like, I, I think we'd try to maybe leave it here today done, is around this particular issue.
Oh, I don't agree.
Oh, okay, okay.
He loves that question, Paul's favorite question.
We will be able to get a lot more work done if we're able to take things that Sharon sends into me.
Yeah.
And I send them out to the group.
Yeah.
However, having said that.
Yes.
You cannot discuss.
Discuss online or in, or in groups.
But we can respond to Sharon?
It's a, we can set it up any way that you want to, um, where, you know, she can send it to me and I can send it to Joyce and Joyce can put it in a Dropbox. Or I can email directly to you, I just need to, um, just remind everyone about the open meeting law. And ask you not to, um, you know, share your comments or questions amongst yourselves.
So let me just try one thing out. I, I professionally hate to write things in committee, so it would be nice to get something done by the end of this meeting.
I agree.
I think whatever we can get, fine, but then I think Sharon should take it away.
Yeah.
Come up with a specific list, send it out to us, and then we can respond to Sharon, so she can finalize the list for our next meeting.
I think that works, just as long as you're not sharing your thoughts with each other.
Right.
We just can't be influencing each other.
Just hit reply.
Just go to Sharon.
It sounds silly, but that's.
Easy enough.
Could, I, I just being, thinking of the timeliness and our next meeting is after July fourth. I, to answer three questions, I don't want to push anyone and make it uncomfortable, but it seems like we could maybe settle on preliminarily. The, this, the wording of these three questions tonight, so we could leave here with that done. Yes, yes, and so that you then could be working on the design tool of actually printing the card and creating the digital thing for us.
Sure.
I, I know we can do that.
I, I think, what do you love about Harwich, what are your concerns for our town, what else would you like us to know?
What about if we, is, do you have any concerns versus what are your concerns assuming, that means, that assumes you have an issue?
Yeah.
Of course, we didn't say, you have anything you like about Harwich.
We said, what do you love about Harwich, what do you love about Harwich? So what do you love about Harwich, I guess the thing, do you have any concerns about Harwich, then that's a yes or no question technically.
Describe, describe to me your concerns about Harwich, tell me about.
Number one through twenty.
Yes, so, so, okay, so I, are we good, are we good, are we good with the leading question of what do you love most about Harwich?
Yeah, it's a great open ended question.
Number two, and, and we agree with number three of the question is, uh, is there anything else you'd like to share with us?
Right.
So the meat of the crux right now, which I know we can do this, is the second question, is the second question.
We have the plum, we have the neutral.
Second question.
There's, I'll throw out a few things, one, you know, what's something you would like to improve? You could use change, if we're not, um, in, you know, um, improve upon, yeah, you could say issues or concern, what a key, you know, what is a key?
Concern.
What concerns, concerns you most about the future of the town?
What's the top issue facing the town?
That's another way to do it, yeah, yeah, and it would be good to get that feedback and you're, you're gonna get different feedback now.
I like, I do too.
Tell me, tell me, tell me about the top issue facing the town right now.
Yeah.
I like that.
Because then you're forcing them like, you know.
Tell us about the top issue facing the town.
Yeah, and you give them a small space.
Yeah, 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 well, there's gonna be that guy.
We're gonna like staple on a piece of paper, I got some things.
That's why the postcard is nice.
Do we want to limit it to just one? Because.
I wouldn't.
I mean, I, I think people could have more than one concern.
I think so.
Tell us.
I would have taken that and I would have written briefly. I would've taken that, and I would've written briefly, if I have more than one, you know, I, because I, I don't think there's, we've talked enough about how housing and wastewater.
So connected.
Are so connected, and then that leads you into conserva- you know, everything's connected, so I, I think you're right about that, Margot.
But if I'm a summer person, I may say parking.
That's fine.
Right, 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 right.
I know, that's, that's my point, isn't it?
There's no place to park in Harwich Port, right?
Or I will say parking, because they all try to park where they aren't supposed to in my business, but.
Yes, they do.
That's why probably identifying whether you're resident, seasonal, visitor.
Yes, so, I, I think.
Right.
I think we all agree about that, so re- resident, part, a part-time resident, visitor?
I think that's what Turoe did, if I could go back.
Sure. We love that.
I can, again, you'll have the PowerPoint, the Turoe card is right on there.
That, that's great.
Yeah, and I don't wanna confuse you, but the other, uh, thing that Turoe talked about doing, but we didn't end up using it, was around, um, activity centers, and maybe you have or haven't heard the term, it's sort of intent, instead of, um, economic centers, or, you know, the sort of terminology, the regional plan, this time around, um, it was termed activity centers, so they're places of, a mix of business and residential and other uses. And we were trying to, uh, see, in, in the case of Turoe, should there be a, you know, a center where there isn't one, or a new one? And that, that ended up like getting tabled, because it was felt to be too controversial, but, um, that could be something later on you might wanna do too is, uh, or we do in a workshop format, you know, tell us, um, what are some of the, you know, your favorite places? That's another kind of fun question, what are your, some of your favorite places in town?
Or, yeah, we're asking, that may be later, but we're asking about what do you love most about Harwich. So, about the second question, tell, so I, I have kinda two drafts from what people are saying. Tell us about the major issues affecting the town, tell us about the top issues affecting the town. Any preference?
Top issues is, because you're looking for what their priorities are.
Okay, okay, so tell us about the top issues affecting Harwich.
Yeah, you know, you don't want somebody to go, well, there's this, and this, and this, but I don't really get crap about any of those things.
Right, 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 right.
We're gonna get some of this anyway.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're gonna get the wise asses, but.
People writing in the mouth line, just like.
Yes. Yes, yes, the profanity laden feedback, but yes, okay. So, any more discussion about those three questions? Please, yes.
Just a process question, I, you know, in terms of how we're gonna do this, I think it's really important, we're not supposed to communicate with each other, so we shouldn't be copying each other on our responses to things, but we should be copying Paul and Sharon.
Yes.
And me, if you want.
So, so that, so that every, so that everybody, you know, is in the loop.
Yeah, and I, I think, I think we're gonna leave here with a pretty solid draft, and then if you could distribute a draft to us on, like, you know, a PDF, and then the electronic, and then we could individually reply back to Sharon, Paul, myself, with a point of feedback. We're kind of saying, go ahead and print, right?
And Paul, we're okay sending it to the chair, right?
Oh, if you don't want to, you don't have, okay.
As opposed to each other.
Not necessarily.
Well, that's what I'm asking, I just wanna make sure.
Just not to each other.
That, that's, that's along the way to.
So, we would send it right to, uh, Sharon?
Yeah, Sharon, Paul, and myself.
Well, that's what I, that's what I'm making sure of.
Just maybe you'll notice that the word is spelled incorrectly.
But you, you're not too sure.
There's some question here about whether you should be on it.
I don't have to be, whatever.
Yeah, it's, you know, you, if, 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 if everybody is coalescing on one, one member, you're.
That's fair.
Pretty much on the way to, I forget what they call it, an ad, um, not an ad, no, an ad valorem meeting.
Okay.
That's sort of, you know, I talk to one person over here, one person over here, and like.
So, if we send it all to Paul, there's nothing that says that Joyce can't get the whole thing?
Oh, I don't need to say it, it's fine. Paul, Paul and Sharon, perfect.
Yeah.
Okay, any more discussion about the three questions?
No, I think that's good. Again, well done.
Getting things done here, so just to reiterate, just to reiterate, before we, before we approve it, uh, what do you love most about the town? What do we love most about Harwich? Tell us about the top issues affecting Harwich, and anything else you'd like us to know. Three, brief, we're calling it the pop-up, we'd like to start deploying at ASAP.
And I would suggest a link to the comprehensive plan page, is, is there a page?
Well, like, you were talking about, um.
Go ahead, no, no, go ahead, Paul. Do we have a webpage?
Yeah, well, I'll just add that there.
Yeah.
Okay. We do, we do, because I've actually Googled us, it has our names on it, and it doesn't have a ton of information yet, but maybe, Caleb, we can work on saying that we're at least starting the visioning process.
So, how are we gonna distribute these, or how are we gonna get, can you run that, I mean, I'm still having, you know.
Well, they'll be printed up by our next meeting, and we'll eat.
Yes, so we're gonna have, we're gonna have cards.
A hundred of them just circulating.
We're gonna have cards.
I, I know, but, um, I'm speaking realistically, how is, so, the eight people sitting here are gonna take it upon ourselves to go and track as many people down?
Yep.
And what kind of a timeframe are we looking at, week, two weeks, month?
July and August?
Yeah, July and August, the pop-ups are gonna be July and August, the formal surveys will be September, right?
September and October, we might need to.
The, um, you know, a lot of the, a, a lot of places, like, you know, friends of the Harwich Council, the friends of the library, you were talking about Harwich Conservation Trust, they all have large, um, uh.
List serves.
Lists that we could probably use.
With an electronic link, so I think we've, can we? Let's stay on the rails, let's, 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 let's vote to approve these questions, and then your point of what you're saying, Barbara.
Distribution.
Distribution, I really appreciate, but let's, and timeline, let's, uh, let's finish this, finish this issue, yes.
I'm making a motion that we. Make a motion that we approve these three questions for the proper postcard?
A second? Any further discussion? Okay, no one's joining us online, so I think we can do voice call, all in favor of these three questions?
Aye.
Awesome, yes, okay, timeline.
Can we just don't give our consultant the latitude of, you know, sitting down and just making sure?
Yes.
Aye.
Sure, and then you'll distribute a draft, a draft to us in the next, you know, week or something, and then we will provide feedback, but not in a way that violates.
Directly to the consultant.
Yes, exactly, to Sharon and Paul, and then, we will, the goal is to have this tool, we can start to distribute it by, you know, the next meeting.
I'm gonna write it on my finger, so I remember, don't send it there.
In addition to the committee members, you know, distributing it and working to push those questions out, um, you could also think about ways, like through existing, you know, organizations, um, leaving cards at places like libraries, post, I don't know if you can do it at the post office, maybe not, you know, town hall.
Do you have, do we have a box, do people have a box?
That's, that's what they, they did in Turoe, they literally made little boxes.
Oh, God, do we have to make boxes? Yes, yes.
So, did people, the town.
Yes, but that.
So, I had just had to do this as chair of the cultural council back.
Do you have boxes that we could?
I may, I took shoeboxes, and I had one at the library, one at the community center, um, one at the two oh four, and I had one, only because it was a cultural thing, but we still had the least traffic there, because we were just getting started. And actually, what I did, which was not pro- making, uh, wasn't a good idea for us, but is for this, is one at the Chamber of Commerce.
Well, did, do you still have the boxes, eh?
I, no, I don't think I do, but I can make some new boxes for us, if we figure out where we want them.
Thank you. And did anyone steal them?
Uh, no, no.
Okay.
And not many people.
Summer's here now.
Put the surveys in there, but I, I netted maybe six at the community center, and seven at the library, or vice versa. But we knew it was important because, you know, there are people who, as we say, for various reasons, are not gonna do the digital one.
Yes, yes.
You know, and I have social media channels, I will be putting the link on those, I will be putting it in places I tend.
Yes, so thank you for volunteering to make the box.
But we'll need to have some postcards.
The boxes, Barbara, so we all have hashed out in the committee, uh, our areas of expertise, our subject matter areas of expertise, so maybe, uh, the way to break that down is to think about like what your area is, and how you might wanna distribute the cards, both electronically or paper-wise.
Well, that's what I'm trying, trying to figure out, is like, how do you propose to get the family walking down to Bank Street Beach, or going to Red River?
You sit at the beach for a day, if you want, I mean, you don't have to.
No, 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 and Jim, Jim is in charge of the seasonal residents, Jim's gonna do it, Jim is the subject matter expert about this.
You can put it in everybody's mailbox.
No, you cannot, that's illegal.
That's illegal.
Sorry, my dad was a letter carrier.
Can you put it in their, in their door?
So, what do we do about, I mean, are we gonna have this electronic, where if you have QR code?
Yes.
You can fill it out?
Yes.
So, can we put like poster board things at different locations, or?
You know, I, I, I think, th- these are all good ideas, I think we need to write them down.
Yes.
And, and have, and at our next meeting, have a, a more sort of systematic.
Yes.
Yeah, approach.
Approach to how we're gonna do this, and so we can document that, so we can say, this is how we did it, or so if anybody knows, wants to know, you know, we're just talking to ourselves.
So, to that, to that point, if you go back to your area of, could I, can I assign some homework then? If everyone, uh, I don't think this violates the open meeting law, if you think of your expert, Jim is the example, I just used you as an example of the summer residents, because, you know, you were kind of the seasonal residents taking it, if you could like, think about maybe three ways you might wanna engage that with our pop-up, could you email me that plan? And then we can collate a document, so exactly to your point, Margot, that we then have a, so it'd be perfect timing, we're gonna have the tool for July seventh, whenever our meeting is, and then this is the distribution plan for the summer, for the next eight weeks.
And, and that could also, um, build upon that, or you can build upon that when you get to the survey and other, you know, other ways of outreach. Um, it does, as Margot said, it does become a component of the plan itself.
Yes, yes, just that we did this.
It documents, you know, what you did, how you did it, uh, how you engaged people, um, so it is a good, and then, and also keep yourselves on track as well. Sort of like, okay, well, um, or if something isn't working, and you, you know, find halfway through the process, you really wanna get some targeted input on specific issue, then you can do some follow-up, so.
Yeah.
Um, it's good to, you know, a plan, it doesn't have to be very elaborate, it can be a one page or two pages, just it gives you, you know, some guideposts for yourselves, for us, for Paul, um, going forward, so we, we stay on track, you know.
So, I, makes sense, so we, we've established the questions, Sharon's gonna help us, create the tool. Homework is to maybe think of three ways that you'd like to distribute this, and then we can.
I could also come back at the next meeting and present a, a draft outreach plan, you know, you give me your feedback.
Sure.
Present a draft, we final, you know, work on it, maybe either finalize it at the next meeting, or by August, and you, then, going into the fall and the winter, you know, we've got a plan of attack, so to speak, for all of the outreach, not just this initial, but.
Sure, so if, if, right, if we, the, the pop-up, we can, we can stumble on a little bit, so if everyone creates for their own subject matter area, but I think it would be a great task for the next meeting, to have the outreach plan in general, because then we can modify with the big sessions in the fall.
One of, one of my three, uh, ways to distribute is gonna be all the tons of people who are at the Harwich Port Music Stroll, so I would like to have this ready by our July meeting.
Yes, it's going to be.
I was gonna say the same thing, I'm down there at my art shack every Wednesday night, and it's, this isn't gonna be perfect, we're not gonna cover everything everywhere, but it's a good initial stab, and it's not like selling girls scud cookies, and we all have to do a hundred postcards. You know, we, we all do what we can, where we can, just to get the ball rolling, and a lot of it will be online.
So, to, to clarify, David, I, I was, we was kinda setting the time example, I think since it's a postcard with a QR version, that we could have that in the next, we could see a draft in the next week, and then it will be live in time for your Harwich part, so.
I just thought we were ending up towards August, so I was.
No, I'm.
Or kind of more of a, more of the, like, the outreach plans, or the whole strategy, I, I gave you some examples for visioning workshops, or the survey, for the, you know, the timing of when the different tools would be used, what's appropriate at.
So, for the bigger, the bigger sessions, David, like, say, senior center, September fifth or something, next session, we can kind of finalize that timeline, is what I'm hearing Sharon say.
So, so we have, I think, up to four workshops, um, two at vision, you know, visioning, I'm sorry, vision and growth policy, and two at goals. Is that what you want to do, do you want to do them in person, do you want to do something one online, or two online? It's that kind of thing, that will help guide our work and schedule, um, what we help you with as well, so it's, the postcard's a great idea, just, you know,
just get something, get something going. Going with that, yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's really simple, quick, but, but the, we're talking about sort of the overall strategy, all of the outreach.
Visioning process, I think we could revisit next time.
Flushing that out a little bit more, um.
We also.
Also, create some visibility for that the process.
Exactly, it's like, it's at the peak time when we have all those different types of individuals.
We also have Jan coming next time too, so it'll be a busy meeting, and.
Karen, you mean?
I'm sorry, sorry, yes, yeah, yeah, Karen coming in, but we will have a tight agenda for July, but that's good.
Okay, so I will work on, you know, an outreach, survey, draft outreach plan, if you get me your.
Everyone understands their homework.
On that, I'll give you some materials, um.
We should each do that as soon as possible.
Correct, and then the second item I'll work on is a postcard layout and with content.
And I think it's okay to email that to me, and I'll fester you. Paul, yes.
Practical question, so we're talking about physical postcards.
Yep.
Is there, um, money in our budget to produce those, or who'd produce them, where's the money coming from?
Right, well, we, we didn't, we didn't specifically budget for postcards, um, other than the opens, well, no, we didn't budget for the mailing of the postcards.
We don't have to mail them.
Provide content for the open space, correct plan, update with additional outreach to environmental justice neighborhoods, so it's like a specific outreach for that, um, I think they're relatively inexpensive to produce, um, I don't, I don't remember, we did, we did them like I said in Turoe, there were three colors, you know, it was, you know.
We did follow up on, on this conversation, but, so we're not talking about a postcard that would physically be mailed, these are.
Correct, correct.
Home stock that, that can be handed to people.
Correct, that you could answer those three little questions, but then there's also a QR version, so you're like, I'm sweaty at the beach, I can't fill this out, I can do it and fill it at home, but also that I can, we can just distribute among those of us who don't want the paper.
Can you also put the QR code on the postcard?
Correct, that's exactly what I'm saying, yes, so, yes.
And then someone has to collate that data, or, you know, take that data.
Will there be something on the postcard explaining that we're doing a local comprehensive plan update, like, why are you asking these questions?
I would highly suggest that. Yes, yes, and if it isn't going to be mailed, you could put that on one side, that's what I'm thinking, on one side is, the Harwich Local Planning Committee is, you know, kicking off the update to the comprehensive plan, you know, help us by answering these questions, it's something like that, that effect, definitely.
So, the, I, I would approach this as the enemy of, of good here is perfection, like, we just wanna keep charging ahead, you know, so, I, I, we're not gonna have like huge, I mean, enormously stylistic differences of like how you explain the comprehensive plan than Turoe did, so like, I mean, that's fine, you know, use kind of that one-sentence language, or two-sentence language, and you are gonna send us a draft, so if there's something that is wildly inappropriate for Harwich, which I can't imagine there will be, that you'll get that in the feedback.
Right, so it will be mailed, it'll be either handed out or QR code that people can go online and do the same thing.
Correct, physically distributed, correct, correct. Correct.
Any, any chance we can get the Chronicle to say we're doing this?
Sure, we can keep talking to them, we're trying, we're trying to, yeah, I've tried to pitch stories to them before, so, they, they are observing, I think, we will become a story.
They listen to me.
Yeah.
Because that's.
Other, other points of discussion or questions in this process as we get going?
Time, how long do we do this?
I, I would think it would be, you know, if you get it out July, July and August, yeah, summer.
Yeah, for pop-up, postcards, pop-up postcards.
Quick hit, summertime, and then, you know, in the meantime, we start working on the survey.
You can keep, you can keep, we can keep it open.
Um, and then, like you suggested, that goes out in the early fall.
Yeah.
Is that, we'll take some time to make some decisions on, you know, um, question, you know, content and.
So, just kind of setting, setting a preliminary agenda, we have a, a preliminary agenda for July, we're gonna, um, finalize, or talk about and draft, and kind of finalize the overall visioning process, then we also have our housing production plan sub-breakout, so that's, that's a full meeting for July. For August, could we anticipate maybe reviewing a draft of the big LCP survey?
Sure.
So that we could deploy it in September.
So I would recommend that you, if you haven't already, take a look at the examples I provided.
Sure.
If there's some questions in there you really like, you know, highlight or, um, make comments on, um, you know, um, if you wanna, could we have a discussion about that at the July meeting too, or is that too much, just like sort of?
It might be a little too much, I'm just, well, well, let's see, we'll put it in, and if we don't, that'll be the third, and because then we can maybe start to really break it down, the questions in August and then in anticipation of it going out September.
Right, or it could be, you know, the August meeting really, you know, roll up our sleeves on that.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, okay, that's.
Sharon, how, how often did Turo committee meet?
Um, they met every two weeks for quite a while.
I had a feeling you might tell me that.
They did, yeah, they did, and then they, you know, they kinda had ebbs and flows, um, then it was monthly. Now they're, I mean, they're working on their draft actions now, so they're back to meeting.
So we just have to be twice as efficient.
We can do this, we can do this, we can do this. I, and I, I'm.
They have a much smaller committee too.
Okay, I, I mean, I'm, I'm open to that, I mean, this seems like a doable agenda, I mean, this seems like a kind of reasonable timeframe right now.
Yeah.
But I'm open.
Meetings work pretty well, and that gives, that gives us time to work on things, you know, offline, and, um, I mean, we have some things to, you know, we need to connect with Paul on, but the mapping, you know, GIS and, um, you know, get the other plans underway as well. So there's a, there's a lot of moving parts in the beginning, so.
Sure.
But whatever you're comfortable with, but we planned for monthly, monthly meetings for the duration.
So, well, Mark, the possible homework, if, when you're, we're reviewing the draft that you send out and send our comments back in, if, if we all had a chance to review the questionnaires and send you, uh, some input on what sorts of things, and that if you could collate that and have us, so we could take that, uh, for, at the, at the July meeting and then come back with a better under.
I'd be happy to do that. That would be a great way to handle it, yeah, is, um, right, to just, you know, kind of piggyback on, um, sort of the outreach plan is.
Sure.
Ideas for survey questions, um, in keeping in mind that I sent you, you know, a housing one, an open space one, and LCP.
Sure.
Is a lot, it's, it's, it could be a lot for one survey, but, um.
We could, we can look at that can down. We have, we've got some good action. And I, for the workings of the mechan, mechanics of the committee, Paul, you know, it does not in any way have to go through me. Please feel free to distribute information to everyone. Be efficient.
Yeah, I'd be happy to like have things go through Paul and that, that way there's like a central contact with the town.
Yep, yep, please, please, yep. Any other new business or points of discussion?
I was just trying to think.
Is there something we need to?
Just clarifying, I, I have it on my schedule, is it Monday, the 10th is the next meeting?
It is, because the Fourth of July is, has thrown us off with the, the, uh, Board of Selectmen meeting. So we are meeting Monday, the 10th from five to seven. I, I don't swear about the room. It may be across the, it may be in the small room, cause I don't know what the selectmen are doing, but it is Monday, the 10th.
They're alternate weeks at that point, but it'll probably be there on week and we'll be squeezed into it.
Yeah, but it's Monday, the 10th from five to seven. Yeah, and then the August meeting is, we're back to.
Normal.
Normal, which is August first.
Yeah.
From five to seven, yeah.
Um, just one additional question, um, how, uh, how far in advance do you want?
Through the end of the year, oh.
Oh, do you want materials sent out? Um, I know that I gave you an awful lot of stuff at very short notice, um, but I'm happy to, you know, give you a lot more time than that and just need to know, like, for the committee's preference.
Real time is fine, I mean, whenever it's.
Yeah, whenever you get, whenever you feel like getting it done. Sometime, things get in the way, sometimes it'll be a couple days before, sometimes it'll be three weeks before.
I know with some, some committees are very specific and.
No, I don't think we have to be, I mean, if you have it ready to go, don't keep it from us, to us, but, but don't feel bad, like it's, you know, short notice.
Or establish a regular routine so that you're getting things, you know, at least a few days, you know, if you have Monday meetings, we'll try to get you something, you know, things like Wednesday or Thursday, you know, so you have.
Reading material over the weekend, it's fine.
Yes, you're like reading at the beach or hiding away in your house in summer.
Personally, Sharon, personally, I like, like, for a Monday meeting, the Thursday or Friday before.
Yeah.
Uh, if, if I get it a week before that, it's gone, and I forget where you've been having a meeting with.
Barbara, was there, or was there something you were gonna say before we close?
Might've been.
Okay, fair, I just don't want you to feel. With that, do we have a motion with that? Do we have a motion? All right, good. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.